Always love that.
For the September sixteen, twenty twenty five Board of Education meeting. You have a quorum. And we will start. This available with our awards and recognition.
We are working to get promoted. The individual acknowledged this evening. Alrighty, and it looks like. Jesse is Jesse is coming online and so. One of the important things that we have at the college and you you hear about the process a lot is. The accreditation process, which is dependent on peer reviewers from from respective institutions in order. For us to go through through the process and so. For an institution, it's really beneficial to have peer reviewers on staff. When you go through your own accreditation process, you're going to rely on their expertise and knowing what my review team be looking for. As we build and grow our documents, so I am proud and excited tonight to announce that. Our Director of Pre-College and GED, Dr. Jesse Watson, has been identified as a peer reviewer for NWCCU. So he will be attending the conference this fall and and gaining the skills necessary to be a peer reviewer. And it will help him help colleagues across the country, but also help him help RCC. As we go across, go into our crediting accreditation efforts, particularly over the next year and preparing for our year seven review. So Jesse, thank you for your commitment to to grow professionally and we know you will represent RCC well in that role.
Thank you for the recognition, Randy. I appreciate it.
Congratulations on your selection.
Thank you.
Jesse, you are welcome to stay and watch as much of the meeting as you'd like. You've also got the full schedule and and I think Jesse had family obligations, dad duties, I think, that prevented him to be with us this evening. Right where he needed to be.
Rochelle, do we have any public comments? Into our college reports, I know term has not yet started and we didn't receive any written reports, but we have any in-person reports today. Rip and through this, let me tell you. All right, board reports, we will start with Executive Committee.
You met last week. And I volunteered to give this report, so I wanted to go on that. First member have done that, so. We started off talking about the Leadership Summit, which was well attended. I'm sorry, I didn't get there. Particularly with the public leadership training about the public meeting laws. I did hear that there was a Duruth dad jokes, I'm sorry for that, my absence there. We didn't have a extensive conversation about upcoming workshops as well as upcoming executive sessions, and that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Anything you want to add?
I think it was great.
I did too, it was great. A Board Outreach Committee.
Jump on briefly, RBCOG met last month and the big action item is they're purchasing Central Point's former public works building that. Sort out their kitchen situation as they decouple from access.
Right. OCCA OSBA liaison.
We have, it's been kind of busy, we talked about the. Workshops for the upcoming conference and they're really good. My only comment about that is that the one workshop I always try to attend about Purge is not going to be held. But Viper Sandman is not going to be giving that one. We've also talked about the Howard Cherry. Award winners and it's a good cadre of people well observing him the mission. I'm just asking everybody to if you can make it to the Dells for. The conference show to go, it'll be a good one, and I think that we're kind of gearing up for it, so.
Foundation Board Liaison. That show tonight.
I'm the Foundation Board Liaison?
Well, it says it right there, so.
Well, if I am, I haven't done a thing.
All right, college updates.
Yeah, thank you. We are excited for classes to begin on the twenty ninth, so two weeks from yesterday. Folks are working really hard, have been all summer. Our faculty who have been off contract for the summer will come back on, starting May or Monday where we'll have a full array of of. Welcome back activities for them and faculty development. Agenda and and one of the things that will occur next week is our Fall Kickoff. And that is the activity where I will do a campus roadshow and give essentially kind of a state of the college update. To to folks to kind of help kick off the year and that's next Wednesday morning, Tuesday, next week. The twenty-third. Thank you. That I'll start Table Rock Campus here and and we designed this this day to be so that. We would, we would keep offices open to support student enrollment support because it's one of our busiest weeks of the year for for student registration. So that's why I do it at campuses, so we don't shut down all part of Table Rock in the morning and have an afternoon session. And the Redwood, we're doing it in Coach Hall this this year, so we're trying a different setting, I think, there. If you're interested in attending one of those sessions, let Rochelle know and we would be happy to to have you there. I think you learned from the workshop that we just all attended, how much is going on at at RCC and we think about. The the lack of clarity and 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 potential kind of situational apathy that can occur as 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 a result of. A lot of the external factors, but it's clear our team is focused on finding ways that we can go get more students, we can support the students we get. I'm especially, I'm excited about a lot of things, but I'm especially excited that we're going to put some continued focus into the student experience. And looking at our transfer students and what's happening with them while they're at RCC and how how we help them with with that dream. I want to give you a little bit of numbers update, even though, you know, fall numbers update will be more accurate and fuller story after we start the term and end registration. So October will be a little little clearer on that, but. What has happened is, as we shared with you in the budget process, we have exceeded the growth management component to the point where. We are generating a lot of overall FTE that we're not going to reverse for from the state. So what that means is we've had to look at our focus and say, how how do we have to position potential growth? And meeting that 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 ongoing need that we receive. And it really has to come from, because it's the one factor that we can influence tuition dollars. And so we, you know, when you think about our 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 funding areas, the property taxes are not impacted by enrollments, their their property taxes or property taxes are. Because we've hit the growth management cap right now. Growth, the the Community College Support Fund is not impacted by enrollment. So the only thing that's impacted by enrollment from from a resource standpoint is tuition. And so when we look at those those areas and opportunities to grow, we've had to place additional focus on on tuition generating educational opportunities. So what does that look like in like real life? So if you look at the summer enrollment report now that we're done with summer, what it looks like is our total FTE, which has been growing by double digits the last couple of years. Was up a modest two point three percent and our headcount was actually down three point four percent when you look at total. However, when you look at credit, which is where we generate that tuition, that general fund tuition. For summer, we were up eighteen and a quarter percent in FTE and almost fifteen percent in headcount. So when we're focused there, because we have to be, we're seeing that needle move and I will just say it's still a little early because we've got two weeks essentially before school starts. But but from the credit standpoint, we're up again right at about double digits for fall and so we're we're. It'll be hard to stay there because a lot of our classes are filling up, but we're not finding, it's difficult to find options to expand some of those, some of the programs that got early registrations. But it's it's a narrative that's shifting a little bit that you'll hear us talk a little bit about, whereas the last couple of years when we said, let's go get enrollment, let's go grow enrollment. However, we might be able to, we're really focusing on. General fund tuition generating FTE and we're having that conversations around even not all that's created equal. That which comes at a high cost of delivery is 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 a little trickier too, so. We're really, and when you look at those college priorities in the five where we said the number one priority the last couple of years is stabilize enrollment, we're really balancing that with the other priorities. And being more strategic about what it means just because of the resource front, which is difficult because. It's really hard for for us to look at a situation and say, if we had more resources, we could provide more access, that's a hard, that's a hard thing to sell. And and it come to reality with. I wanted to highlight a couple of things that that were were in your report that hopefully I'm not stealing from the rest of the senior leadership to report. And I want to talk about a theme about, you know, the work that we do, you saw the efforts that they put into open houses and 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 other strategies. How it actually turns into product. And so we we host, as in in it listed in there, Project Youth Plus, we do healthcare demo days with them. And if you look at healthcare occupations enrollment right now for fall compared to last year. And 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 of course, we got one hundred and ninety-four leads last year, two hundred and six this year, and that's that's an example. Of focusing on an area of need, another really cool area of need has been, and this is why we've been able to grow as a college is. We're not just offering programs, we're offering programs that meet the needs of industry and and of our students. And there's probably no better example of that than our Early Childhood Education Department adding a fast track for teachers' aid. And what they did was they were able to go out and get a grant that provides free tuition and resources for students so they could enroll in this program for up to thirty students. And at the conclusion of the program, which is a couple of terms, they're going to be able to be certified as teachers' aides and make anywhere from thirty-five to sixty-eight thousand dollars, which is a big thing. And it's stackable where they can grow from from the teacher's aide to a teacher, so it really is that stackable credential. The program had slots for thirty and within weeks, the thirty were filled with six on a waiting list, it's probably more than that now. So we're really building things that are relevant to meet meet the needs. And the last thing that I'll that I'll cover from a showing like the the way, well, it's not the. Along this line, which is how we're thinking about growth moving forward. The 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 simulation of experiences, looking at and and we talked about in the workshop how we've received commitment. You know, half a million dollars over the next two years from a community member to grow our simulation and virtual reality experience for our nursing students. So what we're trying to do is to use that as a pilot to pride to grow and say, how do level areas within our curriculum and other programs learn in similar environment? We may have a scenario where in in Diesel, they don't have access to certain components. Here, but in a simulated environment, we could, we could present that 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 learning opportunity to them. Some of the machining and manufacturing is very difficult to get their hands on, but in a simulated environment, they can learn how to work on that, or maybe there's an employer who has it. But they won't let students in to look at and train on it now that they've worked in a simulated environment on the products you use in in your building. So those are the kinds of opportunities that we're looking at, going to make sure that what we're doing isn't just continuing the same old same old, it's meeting the future learning students of our need, the needs of our students. And then the the I promise, the last thing that I'll I'll highlight is. In in effort to make sure that what we're offering is in response to the needs of our students and needs of our industry and our community. You you're you are hopefully aware that a couple of years ago, we were granted authority to offer Bachelors of Applied Science programs. We didn't pursue and haven't pursued any initially. And then a couple of years later came the discussion around Bachelors of Science and Nursing. Which is a different program, so we had to go get the authority for it. What we did is we talked locally to our industry and said, well, we, if we were to get Bachelors of Science and Nursing. You know, would that benefit you? And they said, not as much as getting us more RNs, what can you do to get more RNs? So we 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 didn't prioritize the BSN, we added another cohort in our ADM program through partnership with them. So the decision we made at that time was in response to industry need. All the while, we had another industry saying, we need you to help us with our shortage, we need you to help us with our shortage. And that was our K-12. Looking for teachers, certified and licensed teachers. And at the time, they asked us, hey, can you can you do a bachelor's degree in in teacher's ed? And we said, we don't know if the BAS would lead to certification, we'd have to explore that and work on it. And so we, along with four other colleges, are part of a consortium, Juliette is leading this work on behalf of of RCC at this time. We started to look exploring down that road and lo and lo and behold, there is a way in which we can give a BAS and to provide support for it. Why it's important is if you look at a study that was conducted by the Higher Ed Coordinating Commission, there's some really powerful statistics that they that they put in this study that they did. Which said, there's higher success rates of students who do their education program locally than if they do it via distance. And what we're seeing in Oregon is a couple of years ago, we actually had the number of new licensed teachers educated outside of Oregon surpass the number of educated. Students or licensed teachers educated in Oregon, so we 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 met and passed that threshold. So we need more local learning options in in Oregon for our students. The other bounding statistic there was the success rate and the retention rate of teachers who get their education in their region. And that's exactly what we do as a community college, we educate our region, our students stay in the region when they leave. So there's really compelling cases as to why we need it. One of the questions we've received a lot is. Is this, is this going to compete with SOU? We have no desire for this program to compete with SOU, our intent is that that in Southern Oregon, we have a thriving teachers' education program at SOU. And we have another local option at RCC that we will continue to send transfer students for whom SOU's transfer experience is best for to to SOU. Also, that while there are students. Classified staff in our current K-12 districts who are looking for an option that we might be delivering that's a little different. That rather than taking it online, which is what a member of mine has been doing the last couple of years, they can take it from a local provider. So that's one of the questions that I anticipate as this conversation progresses, that you may get a lot, is how this competes with SOU and our intent is not to compete with them whatsoever. It is truly to complement. And so that's kind of the the. The why we're doing what we're doing, you're hearing a little bit from, you know, Stephen highlighted in the workshop that we're working with OIT to potentially bring a program to Table Rock. So we can have bachelor's degrees, our job is to, whatever education we're providing meets our local industry needs. And that we're providing programs that 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 help with those shortages. There are over two thousand emergency licensed teachers in Oregon today. And so right now, just to to address that shortage and help get the licensed current teacher's license, it's going to take all hands on deck for several years. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to stop on that item. And Juliette, when we get to Senior Leadership Team, who's going to give where we are in the process of that bachelor's degree. But I wanted to give a little bit of the rationale as to why we're doing this effort that is is in some areas being questioned as to why is 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 it duplication and. We don't see it as duplication, most of it is duplication, it's duplicating the distance programs that students are taking. I will stop my report there and if you have any questions, just ask.
Juliette, want to just continue the conversation, so that's where he ended?
So the summer's been very busy for the, we call it the BASE Consortium, it's the Bachelor of Applied Science in Education, so when you see the acronym's floating around and you see BASE, that's what it's referring to. Two kind of work groups have been working, we submitted our statement of need, went through the ninety-day waiting period. And then we have another group that's working on the curriculum that's made up of faculty from around the the state. And then we have some of our local advisory community members have are sitting on that committee, also contributing to the development of the program, so they've been working on the courses and curriculum. Group has been working on the approval process through the half, so we have, the ninety-day waiting period has ended during that ninety-day waiting period. We did get a request from some of the universities and some letters from the universities asking for a meeting. We met last week, the Donna Llewelling at the the HECC facilitated a meeting with the Oregon Association of Colleges of Future Education Programs. Another OACTE group, and so their executive committee met with the representative from each of the five colleges. And I feel like we had a really productive conversation, but the, I I believe everybody left the room realizing that our state needs more educator preparation programs. And that we're all here to try and do the best thing for our RCC students, the community college students and the K-12 students. Like this is a partnership where all of us could work together to help all the students in Oregon, and so I think people left feeling positive about the ability, the ability to work together to help. Develop these programs and ensure we're meeting the needs for our Oregon K-12 schools who are not hard. Finding a lot of their teachers are coming from outside of Oregon preparation programs, we have a school district that provided the data for the last two years. Seventy-five percent of their student teachers were coming from online schools outside the state of Oregon, the ones that were in their classes. And as Randy talked about, that report shows the retention rates and. Likely that they'll stay in the field even for years, for more years is greater when they're educated in their areas and in the communities that they serve, so. The meeting, I thought, went really well with our university partners, so feel good about that, so we're moving from the ninety-day waiting period. We still have an outstanding request from one other college, our partner college here, to possibly meet or have a conversation just to talk about a few more things and then we we will have that meeting. And talk about. We would need to talk about, and so after the ninety, now we're working on phase two, so. Dave and Rusty's like, you're you're helping, if you thought it was a hydrant, I think it's more like Niagara Falls. So we're all, we're all working to get the next phase in, September twenty-fifth is the next round of documents that we will submit for external review. And then we will submit that to the HECC also, and then after that, there will be phase three. And then we will move into, if we, if they vote for approval after phase three for the program approval, then we bring in our accreditation. Folks for NWCCU accreditation, so that will be the next phase to get approved for a bachelor's degree and the program approval. And also kind of aligning financial aid at the same time, so all these things will come together. If the timeline all works out perfectly, as we have it lined up, we would be able to bring students in fall of twenty twenty. We're still on track for that.
Questions? Alright, did you rock, paper, scissors to see who's going next? Go down the line.
So. At the report, just, just a couple of things that I wanted to add. I wanted to just let you know that we're actively preparing for teaching and learning and service next week as part of Fall Kickoff. So that's consuming a lot of our time and capacity right now. And then the other thing I wanted to talk about was something that Nicole mentioned earlier in the work session, and she was talking about the degree audit software that we have. I wanted to just kind of talk a little bit about this. We have, the software's called Conclusive. Helps us, as she mentioned, automate the degree audit process for us. We also have another software called Parchment, which is the transcript piece, right? And so that automates that currently, what we have been doing is our folks have been actually looking at transcripts from students. Course by course and entering that information course by course. And that takes a lot of time, right? And so with the two of these working in tandem into Genza Bar, it's going to really help us automate that, right? And it'll free up some time for staff, and this is important because. You heard us talk about student success, right? And. We, while we do auto award. Career Pathways certificates, which are shorter programs embedded in larger ones, oftentimes what we've been finding is that. We're not awarding those until the student applies for graduation for their two-year degree, right? And so this is really important as the Community College Support Fund has changed and a carve-out of that is. Oh, awarded to schools or or reimbursed to schools based on the number of stipulations, right, by students? And so this particular, this is just kind of one example of aligning that student success. College initiative with the systems thinking initiative, right, and really trying to put it together so that we're meeting the needs and and actually awarding. And those students are hopefully getting, so so with those two pieces together, you know, we're able to to get. The time back to our people so that they can run batch audits so that we can award the career pathway certificates as the students are earning them. And that's going to serve us better. Now, right, because that that carve-out from the CCSF is not. Subject to the cap, right, and so that's important for us to understand. So that's an example, I just wanted to kind of give you some of the details behind. The example here that we're using that fits within that initiative, and so I think that's important for you all to understand. I just wanted to share that with you. Can I add to that, you know, in addition to it supporting us, you know, in 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 capturing the resources, the education we provide. It also allows the student to to receive industry-recognized credentials as, you know, they do the learning. So what's happened is they've, they've, they've done the learning and we have. Helped them move on to to other goals, but we haven't, we haven't frozen to do that. And so what we're not going to do as part of this is we're not going to saturate or water down programs or learning expectations. But we're going to really increase focus on our ability to say, when students have met the criteria. To be recognized by for something that's industry, that has a value in industry, we're going to capture that 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 earned. Opportunity credential and award it. So because part of the manual process for it has been hard to do in the past, with it being automated, it'd be easier for us to do that more than. And it builds on the, thinking about it from the student experience lens, right, for that individual student. The motivation is there, right, they get awarded that career pathway certificate, they become more motivated, they're going to continue on and. It's going to help support the retention and all the things that go along with it, right? The risk this runs is we might have no good opportunity graduation, so it could run.
Team's pretty dialed in and good experience.
So that's what I wanted to share with you all.
Always fun to hear how aligned we are with our highlights. So what I hope that the report demonstrated to you all is all the really excellent ways we're working together across the college. To make RCC more accessible and focusing on these things through the lens of both the student experience and the employee experience. And I'm really proud of the work of everyone in this room and all of their teams. To do so in the systems thinking way, I've been a part of RCC. Excellent projects in the past, and I think what we're seeing that's different is a real focus on making sure those projects aren't occurring. In silos or in isolation, they're a part of the bigger system, so. Excellent work to everyone and nice job in the work session. I think that really illustrated what I was hoping to highlight as part of the senior leadership report today.
Yeah, I completely agree, I was actually just going to mention some of the things that are going on right now, we have the HVAC in the roof replacements and FMPC, Greg and his team have been really working with. SLS to make sure that the disruptions to students and to faculty and staff are minimal, although there will be disruption. And so they have been working on that process. And then we've been using the RUB report again to get everyone notified of what's coming and what's happening as well as our E-team report. I could go on, but after what Jamie had said, I mean, I think she's summed it up, how well everyone is working together is is amazing.
Questions?
I've just got a question for Greg. Sorry to, wait, did you get that back there? I just wanted to get an update, I see a little blurb in the report about the transportation buildings going on in the Redwood Campus and over here. Could you just kind of elaborate on that a little bit, because you've got some deadlines that are coming up soon and whatnot, just kind of give us a.
Yeah, we just finished the schematic design phase for.
Yeah, we just finished the schematic design phase for both campuses, and then we did a budget cost estimate. And uh we're proceeding with the uh schematic design, we moved into design development. For the Table Rock Campus, but we've been exploring some other options for the Redwood Campus. Just prior to going into the design development, so we're waiting for some information that we'll have uh later at the end of this week. And then um we'll be moving forward with the design development from the Redwood Campus as well, so there. They, we started out parallel, we're just falling a little bit behind with the Redwood, but we're still gonna be on time.
Seems to me I saw a number in there that were kind of drifting above the budget line. Is that gonna be a major problem?
Yeah, you probably remember from being on the bond oversight committee.
I do, that's why I asked the question.
Yeah, in the beginning during schematic design, you probably remember a lot of the the. The the needs versus the would be nice to haves get kind of flushed out, and then the design development is where where we really get realigned with the budget. And build what we actually can afford, and then try and bring back those would be nice to haves towards the end if we feel that. You know, we're a good position budget wise.
Uh, well, I'm. The number of sticks in my mind was something like forty percent out of line, um maybe, maybe that's not accurate, but I'm thinking, okay, well that. Can't have a roof on those things.
Well, um, again, we're pretty early still, so you know, I think it's. Premature or early at this point, it really kind of raises any significant alarms, but it definitely gets us. We kind of use these early cost estimates to help us realign, so there ha- I can say this though, is that there's been some. Uh, scope changes a little bit for Table Rock, and Randy could speak to this a little more about reasons why I think, so Randy, sorry to put it back to you, but. So we have grown probably about forty percent in the size of the facility that's at the Table Rock Campus for specific reasons. Um, and then so we're looking at what the actual needs are at the Redwood Campus, which we're gonna be meeting with faculty and staff. Uh, Thursday of this week, and we'll be looking at some of those options. So we started out this project with two cookie cutter exactly the same, you know, costed exactly the same or estimated to be. And then when we really started getting into the design phase, some of those conceptual uh plans, which are extremely high level. You know, we really started getting into the nuts and bolts of the program, which led to some different directions, exactly the same process like we talked about with the bond oversight. So um if we had some really extremely high numbers at the end of design development, um I would be concerned.
But you're still on track for what, June of twenty seven?
I, and I will, yeah, so so as this is, has evolved is. Right, we had the original estimates on a placeholder when we put in the request for the state capital. Fast forward, right, we've got new people in different places, we've got new needs in department. Um, originally that was going to be a single center in Josephine County. Then when you start looking at where enrollment for that program comes from, a lot of them are driving from Jackson County to to enroll in 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 that. And so we changed the scope to say, well, we need that, we need this transportation technology to have a presence in both counties. Uh, so at that time, then even it was the potential of a new build at Redwood. And expanding the A building we're in right now at uh T R C out. Uh, as we talked to scope, and I'm not gonna punt it, but I will say, yeah, part of what happened was. Stephen joined us as a dean and really has challenged, you know, us and had conversations with industry. And talk, has talked about this blended model of both automotive and diesel. It it became evident to us, if we, if we adopted that strategy where we expanded A building, we would outgrow it as soon as we offered our first class. And part of an investment like this is how are you building something that will meet your needs for the coming years? And so we had to say, in order to do that, we're gonna get the footprint at Table Rock Campus. Uh, and and that's also where, and I'll get to kind of where external supports may come from here in a sec. External support will most likely come from, from, from Jackson.
That was my next question.
And so enrollment will come from there, uh potential supports can come from there, and so, so Greg referenced, you know, we're a little behind schedule at Redwood. And part of that is because as we started to see that that dollar scope creep, we're like, let's, let's investigate every option. What I asked him to do is can you go back and check on? The possibility of of using our existing building and investing in it, right, in the same way we invested in E building to make it allied now. Uh, they, they have done so and and are coming, I don't think it's final, finally yet, but leaning very clearly toward. It's just not a good use of resources, there's too many limitations with that building with A D A, but I asked them because of costs, I'm like, I need you to rule it out for us. Because we're, we're getting to that point, and so they've, they've done the due diligence, they've put that scope, scope a little bit behind time. So it is growing a little bit in scope, but if it doesn't, what we're doing is, is, is basically. Updating the square footage size we have um for a program that's gonna have future need growth, so it's like we, we need it. We need to, 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 to do it right, so we're not looking seven and eight years in saying, how have we already outgrown this, we're limited in this way. Which then leads us to where, when we, when we look at the nice to haves that Greg referenced. A capital campaign, so what we're gonna be able to do is work with industry and look with supporters and say, this is the program we're prepared to build. We want to build this learning experience for our students, this workforce training for our industry, to get there, we need the support from you. And build that case and see how much support there is from industry to invest in their future workforce, so that is where we would look for that. Um, beyond what we're prepared to spend in order to build the program that we feel um is is warranted in our region.
Um, I'm assuming that on a preliminary basis, you. Got an report from the local industry here in Jackson County to say, yeah, that's something we need. And, you know, give us some details and we'll look at some helping.
Yeah, so that's the part where we, I will say from industry, we received a lot of interest in here, and what, what, what they said in return is. Oh, come to us when you're ready with an ask, it's, we have to get to this design, so this is the, the step up. This is where we're at, this is what we're prepared to do, this is what we would like to do, this is what it would cost, are you willing to invest in that? Um, this blind, would you just give us money so we can build this is a hard sell. And so if they see specifically what they're able to help us do versus what we're not able to do absent it, that's the compelling case. That's what the campaign will be built around is these additional things that, that, that um. We need, and so it, it's gonna be an opportunity for our region to step up and say, do we want to invest in our workforce, and if not, we, you know, we're, our goal is still then. To build something that is potentially expandable, but but again, we will, we will outgrow it quick, quickly. Um, but it will be expandable and it won't just be limited what a remodel here probably would have been. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for our senior leadership team? Alright, Ethan, anything from you?
I don't have anything to add. Okay, so I'll go back to July first as I was um on vacation that during the last board meeting. So as of today, the foundation is now stewarding uh twenty million six hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. In invested funds, um so we've gone over the twenty million mark. Happy to be managing that, um Randy just went over the campaign and that's where we're at with, with the campaign currently. And our scholarships from July first forward um and grants and pledges and projects that we received, so. We've received the first two hundred fifty thousand dollars from Helen Hansen for the uh virtual simulation center of excellence. Um, we have the signed pledges for this year and next, um we receive. Two scholarships, endowed scholarships from Jackie Hagan Stone, um one of them for general scholarship and. Another for veterans uh to complete their a one year cer- certification program, so that's exciting. Because we don't have a lot of veteran scholarships, and we've received five thousand dollars from Mountain Meadows and twenty-five thousand dollars from Carpenter Foundation. Twelve thousand dollars um from the Betty Gate Gray Scholarship for um uh early education. And worked with Rusty on the O H S U E M S grant uh for eleven thousand plus. And then we just received twelve thousand dollars from Ashen Community Health Foundation to help the last cohort um. Guiding LPNs, um so thus far, we've received six hundred eleven thousand nine hundred and thirty. Dollars um in these funds and. We're getting ready to. Let's see, um, just an update on the stringer gap properties, so those are invested now, um that is an endowed project fund. And we're sitting at um over five hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, and that's. Um, actually twenty thousand has already been paid out of that for this past fiscal year for education for grants past high school students. Um, we're coming up on president circle, September twenty fifth, and we've chosen the twenty twenty-five citizen of the year, which is Steve Rowe. And the twenty twenty-five alum of the year, Zachary Salem Bango. And so they will be um presented awards at the president's circle, and then we're preparing for our retiree luncheon on October seventeenth. And we're sponsoring a table with R C C at the Rogue Community Health Luncheon. Um, operations, our new development director has started, Haley Courtney, and we're very excited to have her, and so she's also drinking from. A fire hose right now, um getting her feet on the ground, um Scott Lindberg is the, as you know, our R C C grants coordinator, and he's moved over to the foundation. Um, we currently, um, the first week in August had our in-house outside audit of our financials. And have received our preliminary report with no recommendations or findings, so that's always great news. Um, and then um this past August, we awarded five hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. In scholarships and um they haven't been dispersed yet, obviously. Um, but then we're getting ready to award another four hundred and forty-five thousand, so uh total awards thus far would be nine hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. In uh scholarships.
We set the goal last year uh with, with the, the efforts on the bond campaign for last year to be. The year we, we surpassed a million dollars in scholarships, now I said, I hope this isn't a, a one time thing, I hope it's a new normal. And we're well on path for it to be a new normal, so thanks to the foundations, they're making that a reality.
Randy, I did want to add two things, um one, um that uh uh. April uh mentioned the Tim Cook runs, and so I'd like to thank Pat Fahey and Roger Stokes and others. Um, out of the seventeen community colleges, we were second um in the amount of donations received at twelve thousand three hundred and four. Dollars, and so um that's exciting, and also we are working with financial aid to. Um, the, our scholarship universe program, financial aid has power fades, and we're connecting those two, so they also talk as well. Um, to just kind of keep three lining, okay, now I'm done.
Any questions? Amazing. We have a very generous community.
Yes.
Place to live and work.
We believe in and trust R C C, that helps a lot.
I think that's absolutely. So we're moving on to our board action information, we don't have any action in this section, but we do have our monthly financial report.
So within the um executive summary, it talks a little bit about the audit, the auditors will be here next month, we are um finalizing some transactions and we'll really. Dig into audit work probably this weekend, next week. Um, one of the things that I did add to the executive summary is the L G. I P average daily rates for each month, so you can kind of see what it's doing, I, after I looked at that for a couple of months, I'm like. We don't really know where we've been and that's not helpful, so hopefully this graph helps a little bit more, if you'd like to see more information, let me know. Um, as far as the general fund tuition and fees, again, it's early um from our perspective. Uh, making any updates on our projections um for um tuition bearing credits, and so. We'll wait till next month for more information, so you can see on the bottom of the first um page four in the general fund. The better worse column, all the way at the bottom for tuition and fees is a hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars more, and that's from summer term doing so well.
I want to say thank you again for the acronym directory in the back, I, I use it every month when I'm looking through things.
You're not the only one.
So you gotta learn a whole new acronym vocabulary when you come into this role, any other, any questions for?
Just a comment. It's hard to imagine it less than three years ago that L V I P number was less than one percent.
Yes.
Substantial less than one percent, if I remember right.
It was.
By half percent, and so four percent on the funds we have invested in that, what kind of yield is that in actual dollars?
I'll have to look that up.
It, that, that would be just a nice number, because there's substantial funds there, so it's, it's gonna be a substantial number. And I'm only bringing this up because we'll know within the near future what the Fed rates can do, and that will affect this number probably down. So.
We'll add that in there so we can see what we're.
Thank you.
Cash wise, absolutely.
Alright, moving on to new business, Jamie.
We are thrilled to have um Rebecca, I believe is the only one here.
Yeah, it's just me.
Is um part of M A C R consultancy to provide an update on where we are with the website redesign and brand evolution project that we talked a bit about at the board retreat.
Great, thanks Jamie, can you all hear me okay?
We can.
Great, I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. I do have a few slides that I'll walk through and then definitely leave plenty of time for questions if there are any. Alright, so. You should be able to see a blue slide. Looks like it looks, looks like it's working, alright, well, thanks again for having me here tonight, and like Jamie said, my name's Rebecca Badger, I'm with Madison Avenue Collective. We're a full service creative agency based in Corvallis, and we've been hired to partner with R C C on two important initiatives. That really shape how the college presents itself to the public and key stakeholders. So that, those two initiatives are a comprehensive website redesign and an evolution of the R C C brand. And I would um just wanted to point out that these projects really support and align directly with the college's strategic goals around equitable access. Student success and institutional excellence, all of those topics have been touched on already in this meeting today. So I'm gonna share just a short update on both projects, where we're at in the process, what's been accomplished, what comes next, and um then I'd be glad to take any questions. So with that, go ahead and jump in, so um the R C C website, which I'm sure you're all very familiar with. Is uh really the front door to the college, for many people, it's the first interaction they have with R C C, and people come to the site, obviously, for a lot of different reasons. But the primary audience is really prospective and current students, and the website is one of the most important tools, really for student recruitment and for student success. I would even say efforts to support student success really begin the first time that a student we- visits a website, making sure that they can. Uh, easily navigate the site, find resources, and really feel welcomed into the R C C community, so in redesigning the site. Um, R C C's focus is on making it a really a true tool for student success. Enhancing the user experience, increasing engagement, and ensuring that the site serves um prospective and current students. So redesigning a site that's as big as the R C C site is a big undertaking, uh has thousands of pages, and in order to do it right. You have to have a very intentional and a bit, a thorough process that we, that we go through. And so what you see here on the screen is the project timeline, which is, as you can see, a little over a year long, and we're about a third of the way through. We kicked off the project in May of this year with a discovery phase. And in the discovery phase, um we do this with every website project that we work on, um this is really the critical point in which we gather input. From your community, so gathering input from students, faculty, staff, community members, and we use a couple of different tools to do that. We conducted an online survey, some of you may have responded to that survey, thank you, we had nearly three hundred people fill out the survey. We had over thirty people participate in focus groups, so we talked with members of the marketing communications team, um students, uh faculty, staff. Admissions folks, and then we conducted a comprehensive analysis of the website, we reviewed your strategic plan. As well as other research and documents, just to ensure we were really taking a really comprehensive look at the current state and also thinking about where we want to go in the future. Based on data and and really using that along the way. So with those insights that we gathered during the first phase, we moved into planning and design, focusing on how the content of the site will be organized and displayed. And you can see, that's kind of, that's the phase that we're in right now, this phase two. And then we'll move into development and content migration, which is a pretty lengthy phase, there's a lot of content to move over and developing a site takes a bit of time. And then we'll, they'll, we'll be um wrapping up the project with ta- training for the R C C staff on how to use the content management system. And with a launch planned for June of next year, so I'm happy to share, we are on track for that June twenty twenty-six launch. And I especially want to thank Jamie and Kelly for their collaboration and commitment to keeping the project moving forward successfully. They've been great to work with, and this project, as you can see, has a lot of parts, and it's, it's a long project, so it's been a great collaboration. So that's the update I wanted to share with you all on the website redesign. Uh, moving on to the, uh, brand evolution. So in parallel to the website redesign, we're working on a brand evolution project. Where we're looking to modernize the RCC visual brand, including the logo, the color palette, typography and other visual elements. That are all part of how RCC communicates visually. So the current brand, as you see here, and as I, I know you're all very familiar with, has served the college really well. Um, it is a little bit dated at this point though. So we're looking to refresh the brand to ensure that the image that you're all presenting. Um, in all of your communications really matches the quality of your programs and it strengthens that competence in the college's role in the community. And also for the folks on the RCC marketing communications team who are developing materials. We wanted to add in some flexibility in how they're able to communicate using today's different channels. So, um, this, this work and the evolution project really directly supports RCC's vision of being an inclusive. And dynamic college that inspires, strengthens and transforms. So we have taken a collaborative four-phase approach to the work, which you can see, see here. We started with a brand workshop, which was a collaboration between our team. And the marketing communications team there, uh, where we, we, um, had a workshop where we talked about sort of what's working, what's not working. Where do we wanna go? What's, we know, what is the brand of RCC in the future? And then took all of those insights in and developed a series of concepts that we presented to the team. And actually the executive team as well, got some feedback. So we, we're taking what we call a step, stretch, leap approach to this evolution. So we presented a version of the, the, um, logo that was just slightly different and evolved it mo- like slightly. And then a little bit more different and then more of a leap, so something even more different. And the, we got some feedback from the teams and got some really good input. And then we're, um, working on refining this one concept to something final that we'll move forward with and then building out a system. Um, for the team to use, including like I mentioned, colors, fonts. Um, we're building some templates out for the team to be able to have to leverage going forward. So that's the four, the four-phase approach that we're taking to this work. Uh, this is the concept that was selected and that we're currently working on refining. So we're in that refining phase. You'll see, um, here that it maintains a connection to the existing logo, but it's a more modern stylistic approach. The typography has been updated to be cleaner, more contemporary, and we're exploring some different ways of incorporating both RCC. With the full name and then also a mark that has the, just the full Rogue Community College name spelled out. Some feedback that we took in from the team that we're, um, incorporating into this next round. Uh, we'll be looking to replace Mount McLaughlin with Table Rock, which is more iconic for the region. Uh, looking, making sure that the logo works well at smaller scales, just that, that it's really crisp and clear and all the different, um. Sizes in which the logo will be used. And we're also looking at considering how a tagline can be incorporated into the broader, um, brand system as well. So again, the goal is really to, um, deliver an identity that feels modern and it's flexible. And that will still be recognizable and connected to RCC's history and the community there. So here's a look at the refreshed, um, color palette. The existing color palette had some issues with accessibility for the web. So we took a, we took a look at the color palette and updated that. Uh, and so as a next step, like I mentioned, we'll be building out the full brand system once we have the logo, um, finalized. And then preparing for it to be rolled out, um, and obviously in coordination with Kelly and Jamie. Uh, so it's the timing of this work and the website is just really perfect. Um, so we'll be able to launch the new site in June with the new logo, the new color palette. And just have that, um, consistent identity across all of the communication channels. So that's my update and I would just, you know, close by saying, I really think that, um, both of these projects really represent an investment in the future. Of RCC and they ensure that the image matches the innovation quality impact happening there. They also directly connect to your strategic goals. Um, and they really, I feel like the, the new website and the, the brand, the new brand will really embody RCC's core values. So thanks again for your support and the chance to share this work and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. And Jamie and Kelly, please obviously also chime in if there's anything I missed that you would want to share about the projects.
Thank you, Rebecca. The only piece I would add is that, um, with the board retreat, we, we focused a bit on the process. I think with some of these things, it's helpful to see the visuals. It's so, appreciate the time. Invite Rebecca and have her share where we're at.
The only thing I, I would add is that, um, you know, we, we prioritize updating the website. Because, um, is, as, as Rebecca said, it's, it's a very critical tool to the student experience, how people learn about it. Uh, through the process, it was brought up. Now might be a really good time to look at your branding and logo. While you're designing this, this tool. So it wasn't something that was on our radar, but went wrong. Made too much sense to ignore. And so we said yes. Uh, and, and I think we did the, the, I can't recall like leap, stretch, the, the threes and, and, and landing on the middle.
Stretched.
We stretched. With the stretch with rollout would be a roll live strategy. It's not throw everything away that we have and buy everything with it. It's as, as the opportunity presents itself, we update with the stretch logo versus, um, the leap. Which, which really makes, creates clear evidence that what you have is, is separate. So this is a, a way to update and be fiscally responsible.
Great. We push back from any of the staff talking about the changes in the logo and stuff.
So the change in logo, um, conversations have been generally positive. The feedback has been helpful. The logo hasn't been sent out to the full college community because they're still in concept design. Um, so I imagine there will be a variety of feelings, um, around the logo. On the website piece, people are really excited and we have big groups that have been able to participate in. The, um, concept phasing and the feedback there has been really positive.
The only reason I ask is we went through this once with SOS. And it was funny, the longtime old school customers, they had an affinity to the old logo. And we heard about it.
It's hard to let go of some things. I think, I think one of the things we should prepare to hear. And this came from ET, feedback from ET, so I was really proud of them, was changing that landmark to, to. Table Rock, which is more prominent in our region. I suspect we're gonna hear a lot of positive people like, oh yeah, that logo is us. In a way that maybe they, they didn't, the, the current one doesn't resonate. So I think adding Table Rock will probably be. Be a pretty positive piece of feedback.
And it's been over fifteen years since we've done any brand work. And at the time, it was, it was, um, I would say a step. I mean, it.
Yeah.
It was a very slight change, so it's.
Micro step.
One thing I, I didn't point out that I wanted to as well. So we got a lot, we got feedback in the workshop and with, in conversation with, um. Different members of the team about the Osprey and the prominence or just the, the affinity for the Osprey and, and thinking about how it could connect. Or how we could leverage that in the institutional, um, logo. And so you'll see there is an Osprey that's been added. Um, to the, to the mark too, which I think is a really nice touch. So I forgot to mention that. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you for sharing and updating us. We appreciate it and thank you for all the hard work you've been putting into this process.
Thank you so much.
Kelly too, thank you.
Definitely major props to Kelly as the project manager on RS.
All right, any other questions? Thank you so much, Rebecca.
Yes, have a good night. Thank you.
Awesome. Uh, just a reminder, we have our upcoming conferences and conventions. If you're planning on changing your, um. Response, let Rochelle know soon. So that she can do all the behind the scenes work. We do have our future work sessions that we talked a little bit about during our executive. Updates, but.
And I, I told you that, that there, I wasn't ready to spoil it in executive, but we do have for the next two months. What we're going to do is, uh, next month, a telling our stories workshop on how we're telling the story of RCC. To effective audiences for October. And then in November, we some will highlight our strategy and timeline. Both, uh, strategic planning and accreditation over the next year. So like, we've got big efforts for both and so that you'll see the roadmap for that in a minute.
Maybe brings home the year with her, uh, cultural competency report. All right, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Need discussion? Those in favor?
All right.
And let's move towards our roundtable. We made the decision at retreat to move our roundtable. Um, up in the agenda so that the people we wanna thank are generally still in the room when we thank them. And so we'll start, uh, Pat with you if you have anything you wanna add.
Well, I, the only thing I'd like to say is Cass, I'm sorry, I didn't, was, was prepared to give a foundation report. I would have mentioned the party on the twenty-fifth. So we go to that, the president's roundtable, it's a good one and I would go. So, thank you, Cass.
The only kind of, I've got, I'm still impressed with what we heard tonight in the workshops. That was just really impressive. To get that information. It was an awful lot and I suspect that we'll hear about pieces of it as we go through time. But to pull it all together and the, um. How, how long did the rehearsal take?
Just one time.
Yeah, it went well. Thank you for that.
Uh, enjoyed the Metford Chamber dinner last week. Uh, great time. Uh, also looking forward to the foundation event. Thing I most wanna touch on those, the OCCA training, now that we're certified. Mostly what I was thinking that afternoon was, uh, we have Rochelle.
Um, I thank you again to the team for keeping us informed. Um, our job is to be able to support you in your work and to, and be the face out in the community for our constituents. And I just appreciate having that knowledge given to us so that we can know like, you know, when you should talk to. Be the one. So it's, it's nice to have, um, that information. Also the OCCA training, uh. Whenever it was, it was really good, especially the report from the accreditation person on how we can better support the college through that process. Um, and just thank you so much for all the work that you do. I'm excited for fall term to begin. I know you were also. And I know there's a lot of hard work you've got going into it. So, and it will be necessary for the board to meet an executive session. So I have a little thing I have to read. So the Board of Education will now adjourn its regular meeting at six oh six and move into executive session pursuant to ORS. So to H League council, the board will not be reconvening for the, after the executive session. And any final action will take place at the next regular meeting. Representatives of the news media and designated watch will be allowed to attend. All other members of the audience are asked.